Good evening. Welcome to the May 9th meeting of the Sherburne School Committee. My name is Amanda Brown and I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We are pleased to hold this open meeting at Pine Hill School this evening and are also live streaming with Dover Sherburne Community Television. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. First on our agenda this evening is community comments. Before I read the preamble, is there anyone who would like to make a community comment this evening? Please raise your hand in person or virtually if so. No? Okay, seeing no community comment, so we can launch into our agenda this evening and we're going to begin with an update from Christine Walsh, co-president of the CSA.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. So I'll keep it brief, but it's been an incredibly packed year for the CSA with wonderful fundraising events, community building events, and of course, enrichment programming. We've had over 40 volunteers part of the CSA this year and they worked tirelessly on behalf of our Pine Hill students and the administration. I'm estimating that we had about 45 enrichment programs this year, reaching all grades involving all students, and I think that's something to be very proud of. I want to thank my co-president Wendy Epik, who infused heart and wisdom into everything we accomplished this year. We were also incredibly fortunate to have two wonderful vice presidents, Ariana Delaney and Megacariala, who will be presidents next year. And my one final update will be on our recent event, Pine Fest. It was the vision of our Gala co-chairs Emily Alfano and Elizabeth Wharton, and it was a night of fun and fundraising, with over 215 people attending. Emily and Elizabeth and their team raised around $66,000, which will cover two years of enrichment programming, and we are so grateful to them. It's been an amazing year and I have no doubt it will be even better next year. Thank you, Dr. Brown, so much for everything that you infused into our group. Your tireless dedication is part of what we do and you inspire us every day with the person that you are. That's our CSA update.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you to the CSA for all of its generosity on behalf of our kids. All right, we're going to go a little bit out of order, so we have with us tonight Jennifer Deben to talk about Challenge Success. And Challenge Success is something that's come up in Superintendent McCoy's reports and in conversations, and I think especially people maybe newer to the district don't have a good sense of what it is, so we thought we'd invite Jennifer to tell us a little bit about it. One thing that I can say from my experience in this district and as a teacher elsewhere is that academic rigor and challenge success are not mutually exclusive. And as someone whose oldest child's gone from Pine Hill onto the middle and high schools, I can attest that academics are central. And in fact, the work of challenge success, and I think you'll probably speak to this, seeks to build deeper, more authentic academic engagement, which leads to lasting learning. So it's additive in the best ways for our children, and I have seen it drive change that's improved the student experience K through 12. Jennifer Deben's one of our district challenge success leaders and she's here to tell us more about it. Thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Deben. I've lived in Sherburne for 16 years. I have four sons in the district, one at Pine Hill, one at the middle school, and now two at the high school. So I've been involved with challenge success since day one here, along with Dr. Brown. And I'm just going to give a little recap of why we got involved, what the program is. There are some people who've been around for a while that may have forgotten, and there's a lot of new people and new leadership in the district. So I'm just going to give a quick recap and then I can take some questions from the board. So Challenge Success began in Palo Alto, California, as a response to some really tragic events there. There were students that were actually taking their own lives on the train tracks, and that school district was a very well-resourced district, very considered high-performing, and had, you know, all resources available to them, yet the kids were extremely stressed out and to the point of these tragic events. So Sanford was nearby and they had 30-plus years of child development research and education research, and they said, "We need to do something about this." So they ended up creating the Challenge Success Program. And Denise Pope is the founder, and these are the two kind of founding books, Doing School and Overloaded and Underprepared. So if anyone wants like a real overview of the basics of Challenge Success, these are great resources. So in 2014, we had some neighboring districts that had kind of a similar demographic to ours, Wellesley and Newton, to name a couple, that were also experiencing student suicides. And our own Metro West Health surveys and some internal data were telling us that our students were trending in a problematic direction. Lots of stress, high anxiety, lack of sleep. So there's kind of a lack of engagement in school, which is kind of what Doing School is. It was kind of checking off boxes, going through the motions. There was, at the high school level, quite a bit of cheating going on academically, because it was kind of that anything-for-an-A attitude. And this was disturbing, and we wanted to figure out, you know, what can we do to kind of help the students, to reengage them, to make sure they're healthy and prepared to do well in school? And Challenge Success was one of the programs that was considered at the time, and that was ultimately the winner. We were the first school on the East Coast, and now there are 700-plus schools across the country, including many on the East Coast, enough that we have our own conference out here on the East Coast now. DS was the first K through 12 district to do Challenge Success. So we've been really key in even developing the K through 5 Challenge Success Program, kind of leading the way on that. So that's been exciting for us to be a part of from the beginning. And our idea behind that was, this is too big and too important of a message to start giving in high school or even middle school. It really needs to come when people are entering the district and be just the common understanding, like this is what we do here. So what Challenge Success basically is, in a nutshell, is promoting a broader definition of success. It reduces unhealthy pressures and demands. It recognizes each person's inherent value. And at DS, we strive to create a community where all children can grow and thrive as their authentic selves. So like Amanda was saying, it's a joy in learning, it's academic curiosity and engagement. So it's not one or the other, it actually enhances the academic experience. And now we like to say that Challenge Success is part of the fabric of Dover Sherburne. We say that it's the plate on which everything else rests and we build from there. We look at it, everything we're trying to do through the lens of Challenge Success and see if it lines up. Let's see. So since 2014, we've done many great things through the lens of Challenge Success. I think sometimes now it's not quite named, like this is a Challenge Success Initiative, because some of us have gotten used to doing things this way. But one of the big things was the Portrait of a Graduate, the Academic Innovation Committee, which was, what, 2019? So it's been a few years now, but that's one of the big tenants of Challenge Success, is to create a portrait of a graduate. And we did that with community members, with teachers, students, parents, and came up with a portrait. And those criteria for a graduate from DS are empathy, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, resiliency, and engaged citizenship. And I think there's been a little bit of a pause in that because of COVID, but we're getting back to it. And I think the goal over the next couple of years is to really make that real for all the students K through 12, so families really understand what it is, kids really understand what it is, and we can really live it instead of just saying, "This is what it is." Some other changes that have occurred due to Challenge Success are the start times change, and that was in line with the scientific research about teen sleep patterns. And at the high school, they have flex blocks and homework-free weekends, and they're working on an advisory and interdisciplinary learning. There's a couple of programs locally, one at Concord Carlisle called Rivers and Revolutions, and there's one at Wellesley as well, where it really is a deep dive into multidisciplinary academics and project-based learning. So that's in the works. At the middle school, the students advocated for themselves for some more homework-free weekends, and student voice is a huge part of Challenge Success. So this group of kids actually like surveyed their fellow students, surveyed the teachers' pros and cons lists, and, you know, really worked out a presentation to give to the whole faculty, is my understanding, at a faculty meeting. So there were a bunch of middle school kids presenting like 70 faculty members, and they came to a compromise, and they did win some more homework-free Fridays and homework-free weekends. So that was along with Challenge Success in multiple ways, you know, giving that homework-free time, but also the kids being the ones that advocated for their own learning. Here at Pine Hill, one thing that we did was precess. Before, the kids used to have to get to school and sit on the buses until school started. So that just made for complete chaos once they got off the bus. And so precess now exists here, and I believe it's at Chikering as well. When the kids get off the bus, they have time to let off a little bit of steam, quickly catch up with their friends that weren't on the bus with them, and then head into class ready to learn. So that's a simple thing, cost-free, minor change that actually has made a big difference for the kids. There's no homework at Pine Hill in kindergarten through 4th grade. There's standards-based grading, which is expanding across the district in multiple ways, increased outdoor time, increased guidance staff, de-emphasizing MCAS and other standardized tests, and moving to more project-based learning and portfolios and authentic assessments. One of the things that Challenge Success talks about is something called PDF, and that's playtime, downtime, and family time, and that's for all ages. That's for kids, big kids, little kids, adults, teachers, and we work to protect that time so people, all people in our communities have playtime, downtime, and family time and have a balanced life. Recently, we had Dr. Lisa Demore come and speak, and that was in March, and that was one of our first in-person events that we've had in a while. There were over 100 parents there. So that was an amazing turnout for us. People were buzzing about it, and people are still talking about it. So things that were learned there are, I hear them on the side of the soccer field, or when people are using them in their homes. If anyone would like more information about that, her book just came out, and she also has a podcast, and I can share links after. She's a great resource and lines up really well with our Challenge Success work. I've heard that people have actually moved to our community because we have Challenge Success, so that's a wonderful thing. People are searching it out and they like this balance. We are partnering with the PTOs and with DSA to reach a broader audience in the community. We're also partnering with SPANDS, which is the Substance Misuse Program, and that had kind of fallen away for a few years, and Challenge Success was kind of covering that a bit, but now they have their own separate group, but we are going to be doing some co-programming. And there's some national webinars. There's actually one tomorrow, The Well-Balanced Student, and you can find those on challengesuccess.org. And there's the Well-Balanced Child, which is new, and that's for pre-K through 2nd grade. And I believe that's May 24th. So those are both virtual. And there's also some teacher professional development opportunities coming up this summer and into the fall, so we're hoping to send some teachers to some of that. There's also a survey that just went out, so I think it came from your email, Dr. Brown, if people want to look for it. So that's just for the elementary level at Chikering and Pine Hill, seeing what people want in terms of Challenge Success programming so that we know what direction to take, and that we're going to, I think that closes end of this month. We're going to analyze it and figure out what people are interested in. And lastly, our funding method has kind of changed. We were funded by DSCF, which has now gone by the wayside. My understanding is that their batch of funds will be dispersed to the PTOs. That will last several years. We have yet to see what the exact amount is going to be. And Challenge Success, the parent education side of it will be funded through that for at least a couple of years. But going forward, we will have to figure out where the funding comes from. And then the teacher side and the student side, which I don't really have control over, but that we can talk about in the future, would that be a budget item, or how do we fund those things so we can keep them going? So we've got 10 years coming up next school year, and we hope to kind of do like, you know, a relaunch and some great programming around that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
On the funding, the district took in a single donor gift of $20,000 a while ago, and there is a balance of that that is reported on the region's gift fund. So there is, I want to say 10,000 to 12,000 still there that we tap in for speakers or whatever. So there are funds to cover the school side.
Great, at least for a couple of years.
I mean, that's been around for a while. I mean, we've only spent...
Yeah, we're pretty creative in how we spend things. So, yeah.
Are there any questions?
May I add, I saw you take a note of the books that Jen held up. We have them available in our teacher resource library if anybody wants to skim through them. Many years ago, you brought a great author to our faculty and our parents in the evening, Balanced and Barefoot. I forget the specific...
Angela Henksgaard.
Thank you. Which really inspired the sort of the groundwork for our outdoor classroom. That is well into planning and soon-to-be execution stages. And it also, it was PD that the teachers really leaned in for. It really resonated with early childhood and developmentally appropriate practices for our young students. And at that time, it was really hard, but we started to try to be much more intentional about not micromanaging our children's play the way that we did. "Put that stick down, you're going to lose an eye," you know? And now you see, I mean, the lean-tos, the forts, the, but playing in the woods and playing with dirt and, you know, playing with rocks and sticks, it's very constructive as our children have a great time with that. So, thank you.
Yeah, so the best approach is that kind of three-pronged approach, when we reach students, teachers, and parents, and then we can really make the changes happen. So that's how we operate.
And I've always been impressed with the K-12 focus, because we moved to the district when my oldest, who's currently in 9th grade, was in 1st grade. And The Well-Balanced Student with Denise Pope was one of the first community events I attended as a parent, new to this community, and it was amazing. And I'm so grateful that I had that when he was in 1st grade and my others were even younger, because I just feel like it's informed the way we parent and the way we think about school and the way we think about balance. And I can see how it sort of progressed as we've gone along. So I think that that's really something to celebrate, that we've been really the only school in the area that's managed to do that lower-grade focus.
Yes. You took the words right out of my mouth, because my oldest is in 9th grade too, so we've seen the progression, both, you know, as educators and as parents in the district. And I'm just so thankful that we have the program here, and, you know, obviously, my husband and I have taken on many of the tenants and tried to raise our children, you know, within the principles of PDF and finding balance and finding meaningful work and curiosity. But it's so interesting to see our children bring it back to us and have conversations at home where we can see Challenge Success and the way that they're thinking and learning about school. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
I just wanted to say also, I'm a clinical psychologist and I work with children and adolescents primarily, and I kind of see this stuff, you know, coming out firsthand. There's so much anxiety, and I really appreciate that we have these supports in place to promote social emotional well-being and within the school environment, because that's where kids spend so much of their time. And then also connecting that to other parts of their world, families, community, et cetera. So I think it's wonderful, and thank you for sharing that.
And there's also a lot of information on their website, too. They have white papers on various things. The newest one is about college admissions and finding the right fit. There's a lot of information, all of which is research-based, and Stanford is a great research institution, and there's a lot of good stuff happening there. We're lucky to benefit. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Question, maybe not directly related to Challenge Success, but for lack of a better term, is there like an inventory of initiatives, committees, groups that sort of support the district, kind of like you mentioned SPAND, Challenge Success, the various PTO? Is there something that exists or is available to the greater public and sort of a...
It's a great question. I just saw Denny opening up the new website and making notes about Challenge Success. So I think that's going to be a great resource, because it's highlighting the groups that we work with, whether it's Challenge Success, DSA, the PTOs, and CSAs. So we can certainly kind of make our new website highlight those, CSAs. So we can certainly kind of make our new website highlight those, so parents know where to go and kind of what their mission and flavors are. And as Jennifer said, there, you know, we're finding so much positive overlap, not in terms of wasting time and resources, but realizing we're all kind of working towards having well-balanced, healthy, happy kids who can do deep learning and be prepared for the 21st century. So it's super exciting to see that everybody has a niche, but they're also leaning on each other for support and for PR and for bringing in speakers.
Yep. I think that would be helpful. Having kids that are only at Pine Hill at this stage, not, maybe a lot of those programs aren't sort of fit for purpose for me personally, but like, understanding sort of what's in the windshield and for people to kind of re-ground on what sort of opportunities or things to either get involved or to, you know, use the resources of, might be a good resource and that the new website feels like, at least to me, a good place to put it. Maybe not sponsorship, but more just FYI kind of...
Last week, I was actually working on a new page on the new website, which is for new families or families that aren't as familiar with the district, and on that, there's a whole list of all of those organizations. So I know exactly what you said, is that it's going to be a resource for new families to the district, as well as just families who already look for it and want to learn more about some of those different groups and organizations that we partner with.
Anything else for me? Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, so we're going to move on, sorry, to a brief superintendent update.
Thank you for squeezing me in. I just want to say first, thank you to CSA for all the work that you do on behalf of our kids. Congratulations on your successful fundraising event this past weekend. I could hear the music. No, it was in a good way. Joy in the spirit of kids, so thank you for all you do. And for those of you who are able to look at my entry report, you'll notice in there, in support of all the rigorous academics we have, it's so helpful to have parent organizations who are bringing enrichment opportunities, speakers, dancers, everything to the table so that the students can see their learning come to life and see that application in the real world. So thank you to the CSA. Also indicated in my entry plan was the focus of DS on the whole child, and certainly Challenge Success was highlighted, and it's overlapped with SPANDS and those sorts of things. So again, much of the principles of Challenge Success are integrated throughout the entry plan and thinking about, you know, where we're going to head, and the more fabric that's going to be integrated into our work in the next three to five years. Just want to say thank you to our teachers. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. We appreciate all that you do. You go above and beyond every day in terms of supporting the social emotional wellness and the academic learning, so thank you for doing that on behalf of our students. The budget in both Dover and Sherburne have been passed, so we are ready to rock and roll for the 2023-24 school year. So thank you to all of you who built a very strong, reasonable, fiscally responsible budget, and for those who vetted it and came out and supported it, we are ready to go. So thank you. And lastly, just touching base around Pine Hill enrollment, and I think Dr. Brown will touch on this as well, but we continue in all four of our schools to monitor the enrollment in each of our grade levels, particularly at the elementary schools, schools as we have to think about enrollment. So we'll make sure that we stay between the guidelines of 18 to 23, you know, in any given grade and any given class, and we'll make adjustments as necessary. And we'll continue to monitor that. Myself, Dawn, Kate McCarthy, our Director of Student Services, provide additional supports and resources as we need.
Great. Happy to take any questions. Keep rolling. So we can move on, Dr. Brown, to your report.
Well, good evening. When I submitted this report last Friday morning, I was excited to share that we had held, we met all of our incoming kindergarten students who were able to join us last Wednesday. In the old days, when some of you with older children started kindergarten, we used to cancel a day of school for our current kindergarten students, and that just didn't feel good anymore. So we used our early release day last Wednesday for our kindergarten team and support staff to provide a short, sweet, warm, welcoming, play-based activity, time for students to be in classrooms, and it gave me a captive audience with the parents and caregivers in another room. Denny, I think we're duplicating efforts here. We invented the ABCs of Pine Hill, which is a repository for all of the acronyms and groups and lingo we use here on the hill, a lot of which stems from the district. So I'll cross-calibrate with your parent repository that you're inventing. When I printed this last Friday, I said we had 47 new kindergartners, and we're up to 49. So you see, this is exciting. Build it, they will come. And if everything goes according to plan, we're hopeful to have three of those 49 so far. It's housing market time, so, you know, we certainly in hope that we'll pick up a few more students over the spring and summer, but three of those students are enrolling through the Metco program at that grade level, so that's very exciting. I don't want to be redundant, but I gave a heartfelt thank you to our CSA and the Gala and not just the fiscal support that that provides our school, but the community frolic. We hadn't been out together in four years, and boy, oh, boy, nobody disappointed. It was great communing. I mentioned teacher appreciation, a shout-out to our educators. Again, I won't be redundant, you acknowledge that. But in addition to teacher appreciation, I wanted to thank our CSA, who provided a most delicious lunch today and a dessert bar, which you know the way to Pine Hill teachers' hearts is through your children first and through sweets second. So you, again, delivered in high number in both of those areas. I wanted to acknowledge a heartfelt thank you to our educators that are retiring. Robin Mansfield, who's been a special education teacher and math guru here at Pine Hill School since 1994, and Nancy Wong, who has served as an interventionist and touches so many kids across all of the grade levels, has been very dedicated here since 2005. Nancy does additional summer tutoring for us on the Sherburne side and on the Boston side, so she's really put her money where her mouth is. So we're very thankful to Robin and Nancy for the collegial support and all the student growth that they've helped with. I think those are the big points I wanted to talk about. If there's any questions, I'm happy to talk more.
Questions?
The enrollment seemed lower than historical for the kindergarten. Does it usually tick up through the sprint housing? Is that kind of a driver?
The census numbers of the, you know, every December 1st, through our school committee chair, we request a copy of Sherburne residents who are 0 to 5 years old. So I always have sort of a 5-years-at-a-glance, and in our experience, the census, give or take five, is accurate. It might not be the exact names and addresses on the census, but the number is a good projection. And this year was curiously a bit lower, a dip. And, you know, usually we range somewhere between 50, 55. One year, we had a high of 65. It's my experience that we pick up about three kids per grade level per summer, so those cohorts do grow, but right now...
In the last 10 years, there's actually been three years that 49 has been the number.
Yeah?
Yep. 65, bar, if good memory is, was the highest. So it ranges from 49 to 65, but there's a lot, 49, 50, 49, 49, 54.
Sort of in line.
In line. And it does grab that, we see that in both elementaries.
One family of triplets, and we're back at them, back at the average.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Dr. Brown. So we'll move on to the financial report.
So you have first just your warrant report, which is just all the warrants that we've processed since your last meeting. You can see we do those every two weeks, and we break them out by fund. That's how we send them over to the towns. Again, thank Amanda for stopping in. I never get any, "Please call Amanda to come sign," so thank you. You must stay on top of that.
Good trick.
Looking at your financial reports, you have your status of appropriations as of April 30th. I realized I didn't put analysis of, oh, indeed, there. I was going to do that and realize it was, it got a little confusing with all the numbers, but I'll talk through that. And then you do have your special revenue revolving funds as of March 31st, which we'll highlight a little bit. As you recall, the narrative puts in bold any new information, so there is no new information in the salary section. In the expenditures, though, this is the time of year that we start looking at open POs, where do we stand, what additional expenditures do we expect? So that's our cleanup we're starting to do right now. So that's our cleanup we're starting to do right now. On the out-of-district, you know, we're continuing to carry just over 30,000, or 300,000 in negative variance. It has upticked a little bit, but at the same time, as we come to the end of the year, there might be some services that we did not have to, we have less than what we encumbered. So that's where hopefully some of those will come in under and make our number a little less. I am happy to report that at your Sherburne's annual town meeting, it was voted to transfer 50,000 from the town's Fed Stabilization Fund and 250,000 of additional appropriations to cover our budget deficit. So that money then will be transferred to our accounts this, you know, before June 30th. So that will end the year with zero. We will end the year with zero. I, I trust that we will be at zero this year. And so that was very helpful on the town, on the town side to actually help address our current year needs. So we're, we appreciate that. If you, if you want any questions on the report itself, I'm happy to answer. Most of everything's in line with where we were before. You will see that we're running, if you look at your total in-district, we just have about a surplus of about $30,000. And then if you look at your out-of-district, we're running about 46,000 over the 300 that they've allocated for us. So that's where we've got a few little true-ups to do, which we will be able to accommodate. If you look at your special revenue and revolving funds, just a couple of things I want to highlight. We are really excited to have been able to build back up our cafeteria fund balance. We had gotten down pretty low post-COVID because we actually paid all of our staff during COVID and didn't have any revenue coming in. But what has really helped us is the universal free lunch. We are seeing much larger participation here at Pine Hill than historically. And so that, that actually, having that constant, you know, there's a, there's a fixed cost and the variable cost with school lunches. And we're picking up a lot more of the variable that's helping us make our fixed cost be more equitable as far as our, our profit margin. And so we are attempting this summer to, or not we're attempting, we are going this summer to replace the kitchen floor. I wonder if you've looked at the kitchen floor. It's not very pretty. And it's not very conducive to a kitchen environment. So we will be replacing that floor. And also, Janelle, Matt, and our Director of Food Service has requested a new three-door freezer. One of our three-door freezers, we've actually had too many repairs on. So it is time that we need to say goodbye to that one and get a new one. So those have been ordered. And what's great is that we're not having to ask the town or your operating fund for the money. We're able to use food service fund balance. So we will continue to make improvements in the kitchen over the next couple of years. And know that that's going to be, the reinvestment back into the kitchen is only going to help the, the quality and the service that we're able to provide the students. The other thing, if you're just looking at ticket and tying, you'll see the circuit breaker. You'll see where we talked about our current year's circuit breaker of the $294,003. And then you'll be able to tie the $458,000 and change to that bottom line number. So you can actually see, keep in mind, that's, that's money in addition to the number you see for the general fund. So that's, that's your total expenditure and that ties to the dollar. And we've also, we always talk about the non-resident tuition fund. Just want to highlight that we have basically expended that fund. We're down to just less than $9,000 in that account. And again, we always are appreciative of the Sol and Gift Fund. You can see how much activity has been going through that account this year. And then just the last thing I wanted to update as we start talking, and Beth already highlighted this, that, you know, the towns just support or approve our operating budget as well as your energy management system, upgrade the capital project. So we are in the process of scheduling that. And in addition, as, as Beth mentioned, we always continue to monitor the fiscal year '24 enrollment numbers. It's common practice for us at the elementaries. You may see us make changes as late as July or mid, or early August. Historically, we've done that at both elementaries, depending on what presents itself as the summer progresses. So we will keep our eye on that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Revenue for the Sol, is that just donation?
That's the donation, yeah. So you'll typically see that in your consent agenda. When the gifts come in, you accept them.
Any other questions? Right, so we have one thing to vote on this evening is that, that is our consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes from March 14th, 2023, which are in your packet. Did anyone have any questions or corrections? I don't know if I didn't notice anything. Okay, great. So could I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Christine Walsh.
Thanks, Christine. Second?
Second, Donna Squaw.
Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion? Okay. All in, we don't need to do a roll call, do we? Because we're not Zoom. Yeah, so all in favor? Okay, so that passes unanimously. And we have in our packet some communications. Just for your information, we have the Dover School Committee meeting minutes from January and the regional school committee minutes from March 7th. And next on our agenda, as we wanted to take a moment and recognize Gita Rousseau, who is not here with us tonight. But tonight's election marks the end of her term and her time with us on school committee. And we just wanted to recognize the contribution she's made to our work during her two years on the committee. Notably, she's served on the Policy Subcommittee and the Negotiating Subcommittee, both of which represent really big time commitments and are essential to the work we do. So we thank Gita for that. As Chair, I've been grateful for the diligence, care, energy, and commitment that she has brought to all that she does on school committee. Christine especially wanted to recognize Gita's can-do attitude and leadership and her inspiring sense of community and dedication to the town of Sherburne and its students. We will miss her, but we know she'll continue to serve the community in a variety of ways. And we look forward to seeing how that plays out. So thank you, Gita. Hopefully, you'll watch this and we will, we will miss you. And thank you to everyone who came out to vote today.